Tuesday, December 17th. If everyone please rise for the flag salute. Doctor, just in time for the flag salute.
Praise the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would Reverend Tom Wurman please come forward, offer a prayer?
Let us pray. Living God, our Creator, you are above all, and through all, and in all. We give you thanks for the blessing of this day, and for the ways that you have blessed our community with its beauty and with its resources. And we thank you too for the blessing of each other. As we gather, as you bring us together here, we ask that you would grant us eyes that see and ears that hear that which is truly the best in each other. We pray too for your blessing upon this meeting. Grace, our civic leaders, with your spirit of wisdom, humility, courage, and peace, that they may promote the good of all, and hear the voices of all who reside in our community. Guide them in all of their decisions, that they may be faithful models of leadership for all of us. For to you belongs glory and dominion, now and forever. Amen.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to go ahead and recognize three of our Pittsburgh positives tonight. I'll come on down, and we'll do them one at a time. I'll start with Jonna Norton. Jonna was selected, I don't know, a couple meetings ago, and she had done a lot of instrumental work with Leadership Kansas, a great leadership program that comes, that you have to get selected for, and tours the whole state for eight months, something like that. And we hosted it, and Jonna was instrumental in making sure that Pittsburgh really shines to all the attendees. There's 40 attendees from across the state, and I heard nothing but good comments, feedback after that. And I know a lot of it went to the hard work of Jonna and the crew at the Chamber and everyone, but I know Jonna was instrumental in it. Not only that, I've known Jonna for many years, and she's just always positive, and does a great job of representing Pittsburgh and the surrounding areas. So, thank you, and congratulations, thanks for coming out. Next, Denise Fitzpatrick, would you like to come forward? Denise is a retired schoolteacher, 40 years, right? Fourth and sixth grade? That takes all the positivity I can imagine. But, you know, she wasn't done after that, so she was one of the original members on the Sustainability Advisory Committee, and served many years on that, and has aged out. I shouldn't say aged out. Term down, term down. So, she'll be back whenever, I'm sure, whenever she's been off of that for a few years. But thank you for all the work you've done on that. She's very active with the recycle center, and just all things that make Pittsburgh a better place, and we really appreciate people like yourself for taking the stand and coming forward. Thank you. Last but not least, Debbie Brock, would you come forward?
Debbie is obviously a personal family friend, and is the epitome of positivity. I've said this before, a lot of times in my work in law enforcement, my wife's work in nursing, we have some bad days. So, when we used to go to Ken and Debbie's house, and just share in good times, and they always wanted to hear about our day, and what was going on, and they'd make us forget about what was so bad. And that's from a personal level, but from a community level, Debbie Brock, and everything that Names and Numbers has done for this community, and Ken almost being gone for a year now, is sorely missed still. But you guys are amazing, and something that all of us should strive to be for our communities everywhere across the country, not just Pittsburgh. Thank you.
For those of you wondering, the last year as mayor did not make me so old that I have a limp now. Just had some recent knee surgery, so I'm still trying to get my feet back under me on that. So, thank all three of you for coming out tonight, and thank you for everything you do for the community. So, I'd like to move into the reorganization of the Board of Commissioners.
You mentioned Doc's on the phone.
Oh yeah, Doc Sigley is on the phone tonight with us, and appreciate him calling in to be here. So, what do we do? Darren, do we just move into motions, or?
Yeah, it's time to elect a mayor.
Okay, well, I would move that, since Dawn is, Dawn McNay is our president, current president, so that I would move that she be moved immediately into the position of mayor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved in a second by Doc. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay?
Nay.
Motion carried. Dawn, you are the mayor.
Well, not yet, I haven't been sworn in.
That's right.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
For the city of Pittsburgh, Kansas.
For the city of Pittsburgh, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Well, Stu, before you do too much moving around, would you join me down here?
Hang on, just a minute, Doc.
Well, Stu, we want to recognize you for your year as mayor. You were able to take spruce up Pittsburgh and turn it into Positive Pittsburgh, and I think that has been a great addition to our meetings and to our community. Recognize those that go above and beyond, besides us sitting up there. So, congratulations on serving.
Thank you very much, my pleasure. Thank you.
Before we get to that process, I'd like to have a discussion on how we select the President of the Board.
All right.
And my thoughts of how the President of the Board should be selected is a rotational basis. Here we are, Dawn's mayor, I was mayor, Cheryl was mayor, Doc was mayor, Stu was mayor, and now Dawn's mayor again. So, it's a rotational basis between the Commissioners, and I think it's my turn to be selected as President of the Board. Now, I've heard some discussion that the President of the Board, or the mayor, is always selected by the most votes in an election, and that's not always the case. I'm witness to that. I've been a Commissioner 11 years, gone on 12 years now. When I first got elected, I didn't get the top vote, I came in third, but I was selected to be President of the Board. Ran again, and I got to be mayor. Now, during those times, John Ketterman ran and was elected, and Michael Gray was the mayor at the time, and Michael nominated John to be President of the Board, the next mayor. That passed. John wasn't the most top vote getter at the time. Another time I was up for being selected to be President of the Board, and Dawn nominated Patrick, and so I got passed over that time. And so, that's why I'm here, talking about how this should be a rotational basis. And I know some of you think that the top vote getter should be the mayor or President of the Board. It's always been that way, it hasn't. I'd like to just bring up one other thing. I wasn't top vote getter the last election, partly because of this negating mailer that Dawn McNay spearheaded. Unethical for any Commissioner to do that against another sitting Commissioner. Did it keep me from getting enough votes to be top vote getter? Possibly. But I just wanted to, you know, take my case. What I think should happen, it should be on the rotational basis, and I'm glad to listen to anybody else if they want to ask questions.
I move that Doc Sigley be the President.
Second.
I'd like to make motion that Chuck Minsell be the next President of the Board.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for Doc Sigley. All those in favor, say aye.
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 So, that motion carries 3-0, or 3... Those opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries 3-2. Thank you. All right, moving on to the agenda, Consent Agenda. I understand C and H would like to be pulled off. Doc Sigley, do you have any that you want to be pulled off from the Consent Agenda?
No.
All right. Consent Agenda will include A, B, D, E, F, G, I, J, K, L, M, N, that is, O, P, Q.
I would move that all those be approved.
Second.
Moved by Stu, seconded by Cheryl. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
McNay?
Yes.
Minsell?
Yes.
Sigley.
Yep.
All right, motion carries. C, approve staff, approval of staff recommendation to sign the consent order of the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, KDHE, in regard to the construction of the wastewater treatment plant, and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute the order on behalf of the city. Matt?
Good evening.
Hi, Matt. I'm the one that had the questions. Can you explain to the people what's going on with this item?
So, this is basically a legal document that puts the city officially on notice that we're going to move forward with KDHE, you know, once acceptance of the loan. Our permit has expired, we're moving into a new permit, but because we're out of date with that permit, basically this is kind of a legal binding obligation that says we are going to build a plant, we're going to move forward expeditiously, building the plant once everything's awarded. So currently, we will take bids on January 29th for the construction of the plant. Once we get bids received, we'll have to award the contract, KDHE will finalize that loan amount, we'll get all that, all, everything, all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted, and move forward from there. But basically, this is, this is our obligation to move forward with building a plant that will conform with the new permit.
And when is the bid opening for that?
The bid opening will be the 29th.
The 29th?
The bid is on the street right now, so.
29th of January?
We had four general contractors show up to the pre-bid, so, and a roomful other contractors, so hopefully we'll have some good...
And construction will begin?
Construction by the consent orders by June of this, of next year, and we anticipate it'll be right around that time. By the time we get bonding and all the other contracts executed, for mobilization, it'll be right around that time.
Two-year build?
Two-year build.
And then, January 1st to 28th is, it'll go online?
The what?
Will it go online January 1st?
That's the plan, hopefully early.
That's the plan, right. Thank you for your answering those questions. Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Cheryl, seconded by Stu, to approve item C. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Sigley, was that an aye?
No.
Okay, thank you. Item H, approval of medical director professional services agreement between the city of Pittsburgh and Dr. Timothy Stevens, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm here with Dr. Stevens, just to answer any questions you may have.
I do. My first questions are, evidently this has been talked about for quite some time. The first I heard about it was last Friday, and I have a couple of questions about the contract, and I was wondering if you could explain some things, only because it was signed on Halloween, October 31st?
Yes, ma'am.
So, but it's dated November 1st, and it's also got an inscription on page 37 there that is written in and initialed, as far as the contract goes. Tell me why, what, tell me about this contract, and why we need this.
Well, initially, we didn't, didn't really realize that it needed to come to the Commission, and then we were advised that it did, so everything was tabled, nothing, no action has been taken. But essentially, for the fire department and the firefighters to operate as EMTs, having a medical director is essential, both legally and to give us that training, that oversight, that guidance on how we can practice and better serve our community.
Dr. Stevens, were you the medical director for the county, or for the city of Pittsburgh prior to this, or?
I'm the medical director for Crawford County EMS.
EMS, and is that, would that end at the end of this year? Is that why this is happening, or are you still going to be?
No, I still have that relationship.
Oh, you still have that relationship, okay. And, and again, who was the medical director prior to?
We didn't, we didn't have one. The fire department operated as a first responder type organization, basically bandages and oxygen if needed, and there to assist lifting cots, whatever, for EMS. But for years, we have, we have required guys to get their EMT license, and they want to be able to use those training and that, those skills that they have from there.
So, none of your firefighters have the EMT licenses now?
No, we all have EMT licenses, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the difference between BLS and EMT?
So, EMTs, EMT license basically licensed them by the state to practice in an organization where they have medical direction. So, you can't practice medicine without physician oversight, or physician oversight, and/or medical protocol, well, and medical protocols. And so what this will do is solidify that relationship so that EMTs can function at their licensed level. They have to be licensed, and then they have to be credentialed. EMTs having a license don't give, doesn't afford them the opportunity to work until they meet the other parts of the requirement.
So, are you saying there will be an ambulance in the station?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. It, this, what this does is, it allows us to carry and administer certain very basic drugs if, if the symptoms indicate the need for them.
So, right now, you don't?
No, ma'am.
So, an example would be like an EpiPen, or?
Epinephrine is a very good one. Severe allergic reactions, if we can get that to them quickly. Epinephrine is, is a very good one. Severe allergic reactions, if we can get that to them quickly, fantastic. And then, you know, there's half a dozen or a little more.
It's hard to hear. Is there a way to, sorry, is there a way to?
Is there no mute button on his end?
If he could just mute his.
There's so much background. I'm trying to really concentrate on what you're saying. I'm sorry.
Doc Sigley, Doc, could you mute until you're ready to vote?
Yeah, whenever you're ready. I'm going to lose you here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll vote for.
Sorry.
Are you, are you ending? Are you leaving us?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm about to go down to the radio, if I can.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Bye-bye.
I'm sorry. I just, I was trying really hard to pay attention.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, lost my train of thought here, sorry. So you're saying that the guys now are just basic life support help?
CPR, bandages, administer oxygen if it's, if it's indicated that they need to.
So with this accreditation that you're talking about, they'll have more items that they need, like she was talking. EpiPen, what else?
Yes, ma'am. Nitroglycerin, aspirin for angina cardiac events. Nebulized breathing treatments, asthma and COPD patients, a lot of times, they call, they're not breathing. We, we can give that. If we have what we call a code or a breathless, pulseless person, a supraglottic airway, which enables to, to get the oxygen into their lungs a little bit better. Glucose and glucagon for diabetic emergencies. Naloxone, Narcan for overdoses, that sort of thing.
So do you carry the AEDs?
We do carry an AED, yes, ma'am.
So I'm just curious, like I said, because this is very interesting, but why would we have not? I mean, I personally had no knowledge about any of this prior to.
And that, and.
So why wasn't we involved in the discussion? I would have liked to have been. I don't know about the rest of you guys.
And I trust, I trust the staff.
Well, it's, it's pretty simple, okay? So they respond to medical calls. They've been a fire department a lot longer than I've been here and a lot longer since he became chief. And when they show up with that fire call, and a car wreck or a medical emergency, they usually show up with an ambulance. One of them's either there first or second, but in the end, the ambulance has the paramedics, and they do their thing, and the fire department is there to do the two or three things that you listed originally. I don't know if anybody was aware, the last couple of years, there's, there's less ambulance service than there has been in the city to some of these things. So the challenge was put to the chief early in the year. What can we do that we're currently licensed to do and skilled to do that we're not doing? And he said, well, I'll come up with a list of things. He mentioned most of them about five minutes ago. And I said, well, what would it take for us to make sure that if a firefighter shows up without becoming an ambulance service, without everybody getting recertified, I think the taxpayers would like to know that if a firefighter shows up and they're on scene first and there's no ambulance, they can do everything within their power and within our budget to allow them to do that. He came up with a list of things and a list of services, and all of it came back to you need a medical director to do it. And none of that needs to come before the commission, there's no contract, there's no expense. Dr. Stevens' contract would be for $1,000 a month, which is $12,000, which is under the $20,000 limit for things that need to come before the commission. But after talking to Henry, he's like, it's a contract, it's kind of a big deal, and honestly, we'd like to promote the service. So that's what it's doing here today.
So this is for the benefit of your department, your guys being more accreditation, him overseeing it. This, you're not taking over the ambulance service for the county?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, just so we're clear. And then this part here about the medical director will be provided supervisors and directors insurance coverage by the city. That's when you're working for the city. Otherwise, I'm sure you have your own insurance for when you're doing other things.
So there's different types of insurances. The malpractice is what is commonly known.
Okay.
That I carry myself. It's through our organization, and that's covered. And it's actually covered at $1 million, $3 million, instead of the $1 million, $2 million that's listed in the contract. The supervisor insurance would be if there was a suit against the fire department by one of the employees that said that we were discriminating based on whatever. It allows me as a director and supervisor to be a part of the covered claim from the city side. Otherwise, we have to do an additional insurance policy.
Okay.
We checked into that before. We were able to do that through the city without cost accumbrance. And that's, it just makes sense to do it that way. That's how I do it through the county as well.
Okay.
I have, I have several questions. Taylor, how many, you said every member of our fire department is EMT?
Yes.
I was on the fire department a number of years ago, and when this city fire department, we first started out first responder, which is basically first aid.
Yeah.
Some of us were introduced to EMTs, and I was one of them. When we did that, we operated under Dr. Stevens' guidelines that he set for Crawford EMS. And that's what we did. You mentioned that this will allow us to do things that EMTs didn't, wasn't able to do. And I have to disagree with you on that one. We did everything from giving oxygen. You talked about an EpiPen. The EpiPen can be delivered by anybody. It has to be prescribed for the patient. You have to ask the patient's name and see when the expiration date. So just by having him as a doctor overseeing our EMTs, we already can do that. Bus drivers can do that. You talked about Narcan. That's something anybody can do. We do that. We have carried on the bus. It's unfortunate that we live in a city with a drug issue that we, as bus drivers, have to be able to administer Narcan to our kids on the bus. Isn't that unfortunate that that's happened? My question is, when I was on the fire department, we operated under Dr. Stevens as our medical director.
I was, I never had a medical director relationship.
Well, under the, under, whatever you were for Crawford County EMS, that's how we operated through them. We had a commission for 12 years, and like you said, why didn't this come up at some point in the last 12 years? And it's coming up now. My concerns are, I see here, Taylor, that we're all EMTs, and we are trained to do to our level expertise. But there's four or five things in here that talks about the city's EMTs, paramedics. Who's paramedics on fire department?
We have no paramedics.
We have none.
We have none.
None. So what, what could they do any different than we? I know what they can do different, but still, they're going to be sitting there with the patient just like the EMT is. We don't run the ambulance service. Now, my understanding, there's been talk with city staff and Mercy about running the ambulance service so we can transport patients. And I know there's been talk with Mercy and Crawford County EMS about Pittsburgh being able to transport. Now, I know probably the numbers have been down on the transports recently.
Was that transporting from emergency scenes, or?
Do what now?
Was that transporting from emergency scenes, or what kind of transport was that?
Transporting from the hospital in Pittsburgh Mercy to Mercy Hospital in Joplin. That's what they wanted to be able to do. That's my understanding.
Right.
And I talked to Darren, we talked about this. You said something about.
For Kansas City.
We need to transport. The city needs to transport. And then somehow that went away.
So Chuck, what are your questions related to?
I'm still talking about.
I know, but what are your questions?
So anyway, Taylor, my thoughts are, what I'm reading between the lines, and I, hopefully, we don't take over the ambulance service. We had it once. It was a money-losing operation. We couldn't afford to keep it, so the county provided ambulance EMS service, and they serviced the area, the whole county.
What I see before us is a contract that makes Pittsburgh better from a more professional standpoint to make sure we have the equipment that we maybe don't have now, that, that we can have with a medical director.
What is that equipment?
If this contract was trying to take away services to offer to our citizens, I would be very much opposed to it. But I'm very much in favor of doing something that's going to enable more professionalism, more emergency response items, whatever that may be, Chuck. I don't know. I mean, the chief mentioned several of them. And I think it just matters that we have a medical director now that's signing off on that and overseeing that, and making sure along with that comes training and, you know, interaction with the, with the firemen, correct? I mean, is that something that's more available than what it is now, possibly? And we just have someone, Dr. Stevens, to answer for those things and to lean on for guidance and, and/or, you know, information. So I don't, I don't have a problem with this contract at all. I mean, I, I, I respect the, the questions about it, but, I mean, we're getting into an area that we're not even talking about right now as far as taking over an ambulance service. That's not even in the.
Well, that was mentioned. Darren told me that.
No, I didn't.
You, you told me that we need to transport from the hospital.
That's not taking over.
That's not the ambulance service, no. I was asked specifically by you, are we trying to get into the ambulance business? And I said, no. We met with Mercy at their request, with the county, with the hospital, and a lot of other emergency responders about could they get assistance transporting patients to and from Kansas City? Some of those wouldn't be an ambulance situation. They would just be somebody that needed to go, and there just weren't enough bodies to operate the ambulance service and do a transport to Kansas City, which takes about six hours up and back, and then with the time there, and then I think it was three hours, he said, just to Joplin. So that's as far as the discussion went, but nobody's approached me about anything to do with the ambulance service. Sorry if I confused you.
If I could, so all the years we've operated, basic life support EMTs, we, and you were not our medical director. We couldn't, how, how do we operate without a medical director?
We operated as a first responder service in the first responder protocols. And so there's a, there's a little bit difference there. And first responders can first, any, anybody can do the first responder training, stop the bleed, CPR. You can perform those truly lifesaving skills in, in, in whatever situation, wherever, as a first responder. And that's how you function. But when you get to the EMT basic level, especially when we're talking about medicines and some advanced procedures, that's, you're, you're, you're functioning in the capacity of medicine, right? And, and as a medical provider. And there's only one type of, well, two, that can function as a medical provider in the state of Kansas. Practitioners, APPs or PAs, and physicians. But otherwise, nobody else is allowed to, to provide medical care. You're practicing medicine without a license. And, and just to clear confusion about licensing as an opportunity to provide that medical care, just because you have an EMT license, that means that if you are in a system that you're credentialed and you have medical direction with protocols, then you can provide medical care. Outside of that, you are not legally able, legally able to do that. And so what we're trying to do is increase the capability of the service to provide medical care to the community. And we have had EMS challenges, right? We are working through that shortage. COVID was very difficult on medical care across the country. And that's from EMT level all the way to physicians. And rural communities especially are suffering from that impact, and ours is one of them. And in an effort to provide on-scene quick, rapid, lifesaving medical care, we're trying to build this service a little higher, not to be an ambulance service. And I'll be honest, I am not interested in Pittsburgh Fire becoming an ambulance service.
I'm glad you're there.
You're right. It's a money loser. It's a very challenging system to run. And if, you know, if this county or if this city doubles, triples in size, you might want to consider it. But as it is right now, that is not your best option. That's not what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is get chief and his guys, who are on scene two to eight minutes prior to when we are for Crawford County EMS, to be able to provide that lifesaving or stabilizing skill set that they have, right? They are all EMTs. That's awesome. That groundwork's done. We just got to unleash that power so we can provide that medical care to the community, and that's all that he's asking. And that's why they asked me on board, and as a, as a resident of this community with friends, family here, I want them to be able to do everything they can to help.
Sure, sure. So my, my question is, then why haven't we done this sooner? 12 years I've been on the commission, it's not, why, why?
The biggest reason is because we have had an ambulance service that's run by the county that has four ambulances. This is just stuff that we were told the other day by the emergency management director. And they've always had a good staff. They've had the one in reserve. I think we have very few instances where they're not there right after the fire, if not before. And in the last couple of years, I want to be real careful what I say about another entity, but according to the gentleman that we spoke to the other day, that's not necessarily the coverage we have now. And the firefighters and the police officers have made it clear that a lot of times, they're on scene alone. And I'm like, well, I don't know that the community necessarily knows the staffing levels of the police and fire and the paramedics at any given time, but we need to make sure whoever from the city shows up can do whatever they can do and not pass judgment on anything else. That's why, that's what's changed to me in the last two years. I've been here 13, and it's never been an issue until then. And it took a while to get Dr. Stevens out onboard to negotiate a contract. This isn't something that we've done before. We didn't want to get it wrong. And the reason it's coming to you today is more of a courtesy because it is under the $20,000 limit, but it's something that we think is necessary, and people need to understand that the fire department's trying to do whatever they can do to make sure that they save a life or make somebody comfortable if they're in an injury, until we get the right people there, and until, I know the county's working hard to get more drivers and more paramedics so they can get back to their normal routine. But that has not been the case, and if I misspoke, I'm sure one of you will clear me up.
Well, I agree with you, Darren, and they're going through the same thing everybody's going through. The city went through that, and I, I don't know where we're on our police staffing or firefighter levels, but the EMS went through the same thing. I know they, probably some of the calls that they're slow getting to because of manpower. They didn't have the manpower. But like you said, I understand their manpower, staffing levels are increasing. I think they're running three trucks now. They was only running two trucks for the whole county. They have a fourth truck. Hopefully, that, that will, in the next six months, I was told, they'll be able to do more transport. But, so I'm, I'm in favor of all this. I just, like you said, and like you said, I want to make sure we're not interested in getting to the ambulance business.
Well, I want to commend the chief and, and all of Pittsburgh Fire for stepping up to do something that they didn't sign on to do. Signed on to become firemen. You don't necessarily want to be EMTs, and that's not, that's not saying anything about EMTs. It's two different things, right? I mean, but for you guys to step up and answer the call because there was shortages or gaps is commendable. And I would adamantly move to approve this.
Well, one more, one more thing before.
I'd still move to approve this.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Is there a second, then we can have more?
But the last thing I want to say, when you said they didn't sign on, that is a requirement to be on the fire department now. You have to be at EMT level.
Oh, it is. It is. We require everyone to, to get that certification, just so that we are able to provide the.
And that's, it takes a while to get that. It's not something you get in a week, so.
Okay, there's a motion made by Stu. Is there a second to approve the contract for medical director professional services?
I second it.
Moved by Stu, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Stevens.
Thanks for explaining. Appreciate it.
Good job, chief.
All right, moving on to public hearing for property tax abatement at Atkinson Industries. The city of Pittsburgh advertised for a public hearing to be held on December 17th, 2024, at the city commission meeting commencing at 5:30 PM in the city commission room located in law enforcement center, through One North Line, to consider the request for a tax abatement submitted by Atkinson Industries LLC.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. This is a pretty straightforward request. Avail Industries, also known as Atkinson Industries, one of Pittsburgh's oldest employers. They've been here for well over 100 years, and even better news, they continue to, to grow. They have recently completed an expansion that was valued at $1.1 million to accommodate a big order. Their normal production of those, these large electrical trailers that sometimes you'll see coming down routes with a police escort, their normal annual production is around 150 of those per year, and this one order was 300. So this was two years' worth of production in, in one order. So that triggered an expansion that not only added quite a bit of space, 20,000 square feet to their Pittsburgh facility, but also required them to add employees as well. So they applied for a property tax exemption, which the city has granted for them in the past. So we completed all the necessary steps as dictated by the state. Thank you to the city clerk for all the, the public notices and notifying the other public entities. They, the company was also required to do what's called a cost benefit analysis that shows that the, the value of the property tax exemption is, is good for the community and all the taxing entities. And Steve Ross. and all the taxing entities. And Steve Robb, a well-known person here in our community, conducted the cost benefit analysis and can answer any questions related to that. But this request came before the EDAC a couple of weeks ago. They unanimously recommended approval of it, and we bring that to you tonight for your consideration. And I did forget to mention, Madam Mayor, that per the city's schedule, that $1.1 million would qualify the company for a six-year abatement. So that's what we would be asking for.
All right. I will take a moment and open the public hearing. Anyone would like to come forward to provide input on the property tax abatement for Atkinson Industries. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Stu, seconded by Cheryl. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Blake. Consider the following, Resolution Number 1291. Consider approval of Resolution 1291 authorizing the offering for sale of a taxable general obligation bond, Series 25, 2025A, of the city of Pittsburgh, Kansas.
This is actually tagged with my name, but fortunately for me, Garth is here. Garth is our bond counsel, Gilmore and Bell, and he can give complete, a much more complete explanation and answer all your questions. Thanks for letting me sit here.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Jay Mitch and Garth Herman with Gilmore and Bell, the city's bond counsel. So the item before you tonight is a resolution that will authorize the sale of the city's taxable general obligation bond, Series 2025-A. The proceeds of this bond issue will finance the economic development project that the city commission authorized last month related to the construction of a new building to help with the Eagle Pitcher expansion. Adoption of this resolution will authorize the sale of those bonds, which is scheduled to occur on February the 6th, 2025. The results of that sale will be completed on that date, and assuming that they are within certain parameters, so that the principal amount does not exceed $5,250,000. And so long as the true interest cost does not exceed 6.5%, as long as the winning bid is within those parameters, and it would authorize the city to award the sale on February the 6th. And then the final documents related to that bond issue would actually come back for city commission ratification at your February 11th meeting, with the closing of the bond issue scheduled to occur on February the 27th. So the closing is when the funds from that bond sale would actually reach the city's bank account, at which point they would be able to be used to fund this project that is a single project included in this bond issue. Adoption of this resolution also authorizes, you know, my law firm along working with city staff and the city's financial advisor, Baker Tilly, to take all the steps necessary leading up to the sale, preparing the notices of sale, the documentation about the city to help with that sale, basically get all of those authorizations and documents in place and have them ready in advance of that sale on February the 6th. So this is the second out of the third kind of action items that the city commission is going to have. Obviously, the first one was the authorization. Now we're authorizing the sale. And then at that February 11th meeting will be the final action that the city commission will need to take related to these bonds. So with that being said, I'll pause for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Garth or Jay? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Yes, I can.
Moved by Stu, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Garth.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Garth.
Moving on to B, disposition of bids. Washington School Project. Consider staff recommendation to accept bids for specific trade areas for the Washington School Project. Jay?
You know, Commissioners, I think you understand that the issues we've been having in terms of getting the bidding done through the Washington School. There's two pieces to the Washington School Project. One is the restoration of the old building. That's proceeding at pretty good pace right now. The second piece is the new construction, which is going to be a preschool. That was what required, that is the, where we placed the CDBG funds. That's what the CDBG funds that we accepted are to be paying for. That requires a whole bunch of, there's a whole bunch of requirements that are wrapped around CDBG funding. And for that reason, and for basic reasons of having difficulty with finding contractors in general, we've been having to go through multiple bidding processes. We've gone through two bid processes right now for that preschool building project. And we haven't, we've only gotten about half of the bid items that have been bid on successfully. And we're asking that you approve those bids that we did receive, that were successfully received tonight. And we're going to have, we have actually opened up another bid process already for, with the bid opening of January 2nd for the remaining, for the remaining elements of that contract.
Does the requirements allow for this in CDBG?
It, we did have to go through a number of steps. We had conversations with the CDBG staff, and they approved the process that we're following.
Jay, who is a licensed daycare provider for this project?
We are still in the middle of negotiating for that right now. We've got a couple of good candidates, but we haven't finalized the contract yet.
Well, I know when this CDBG was applied for, I asked that question to Ron Scriptick, and he told me it was Washington School LLC. And I think that is on the application that they are the provider. And that's not correct, right?
We are responsible for making sure that there is a provider, and they'll contract through us.
But when Ron told me that's who it was, that wasn't correct. That wasn't the provider.
Washington School LLC is not a daycare provider.
Yeah. So when he told me that, that wasn't correct.
I wasn't privy to that conversation.
All right. Well, you was here. So anyway, my thoughts are, like you said, we went through two rounds, and I seen in the paper, there's another bid process. So I would like to maybe hold off on that. Let's see how those bids come in, and then do them all at the same time, so.
Well, we are a little bit under the gun here. We'd like to open up the preschool in August. So we, there's a period of time where the successful bids that we have received need to be, we would like to get started on those. So holding off for another month is not, we really would rather not do that.
So would that also maybe jeopardize any of these businesses from fulfilling their bids? I mean, if you were saying no?
We would put them outside of the, I think there's timeframes that those bids are good.
Two weeks, isn't it? Isn't it just two weeks? Is it January the 2nd, the next bid opening?
It's the next bid opening, yeah.
So what would the, I mean, what's the rationale? It's, I mean, I'm asking Chuck, what's the rationale for waiting?
Are you saying that it's behind schedule? Is it behind schedule, or is it on schedule?
We are closing in on the schedule to complete it in August.
Okay, it has to be completed.
I just, the reasoning was, I thought there was certain criteria we had to go through. And now it sounds like we changed the game in midway that we can, we can change it up. But that's why I asked this question. I thought we ought to get all of them. But what is the, what is the date for completion on both of these buildings?
We wanted to have both of them open up for the school year in August.
But isn't there, they have to be done? I was told by, is it 7/21 and 2025? Is that when?
Are you talking about the county money?
For the, yeah, for this.
If you're talking-
Or the CDBG?
Yeah. Is that when?
That's the Department of Commerce. What's the timeframe for that, that grant, the community development block grant?
That's, that is the timeframe that has been set at this point.
What is that date?
It's the end of July.
Yeah.
And this was for, this was for last year. Isn't every year where allotted so much community development block grant money? And this was for 2023? Or is that like, just like Lawrence was for this calendar year? Or is that?
Well, you make the application, and then if you're successful, then you have a timeframe to spend money.
And this is just for the additional building?
That's correct.
This is just for the-
For the preschool portion, which is a new, which is going to be a brand-new construction.
Move to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
So the motion fails?
So what that means is we're going to delay the opening of the school.
Yeah.
Right.
Which means we're going to delay access for families.
For choker.
Yep. All righty. Moving on to C, variance requests. Marietta, consider the recommendation of the Planning Board of Zoning Appeals to approve the request for a variance at Ford Deer Run Lane to allow construction of a secondary structure greater than 900 square feet.
Mayor and Commissioners, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
This isn't out of the ordinary. We've approved variances like this in the past.
You've seen several of these, yeah.
Any questions for Dexter?
I move to approve.
Motion by Cheryl, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. City of Pittsburgh Housing Incentive Program. Chip, consider staff recommendation to approve the intergovernmental agreement for the City of Pittsburgh Housing Incentive Program. Kim, welcome.
Well, hello. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. I will reference my memo on this. I think it's got some decent explanation of what we're looking to do and what we're proposing for you. And then you also have the document in front of you, which I'm sharing on the screen as well, that kind of breaks it down to simplify. So the lack of affordable housing in Pittsburgh is restricting growth and the ability to support workforce demands. High material costs, delivery delays, skilled labor shortages, and market forces are all diverting resources away from rural areas and impacting home builders. To promote and support affordable housing within the city limits of Pittsburgh, the city housing incentive program is being proposed. This program would be referred to as the CHIP, and the, we received, the city of Pittsburgh received funding from the North Joplin Apartments Incorporated and the Presbyterian Church of Pittsburgh, Kansas in 2005, for the purpose of promoting the expansion and supply of low-to-moderate-income housing, which is what we would be doing. The proposed intergovernmental agreement for the City of Pittsburgh Housing Incentive Program would establish a fund that would grant 10% of the cost to build a single-family home not to exceed $20,000 to the builder of that home if the home is sold to a low-to-moderate-income verified buyer. This agreement is being proposed between the City of Pittsburgh, Crawford County, and the Unified School District, number 250, because the fund would be a revolving fund with the three participating entities foregoing the incremental property tax on that new home until that 10% grant is paid back to the fund. The goal is to increase the low-to-moderate-income housing options within the city limits of Pittsburgh and provide an incentive to local builders to stay local and hopefully continue to develop talent of the trades here in the city limits of Pittsburgh. The revolving CHIP funds would continue to support the housing market for years to come while also increasing the quantity of workforce and affordable housing. That's a general summary. Again, the pictures here, we have worked with, Jim Emerson helped to create this agreement, Bill Walker with the school district. We've had a lot of discussions. We've worked with some local builders to try to get some feedback as well. And we really feel like this is a great use of the funds to help with housing stock in Pittsburgh. I'd be glad to answer any questions. And Darren, if you have anything to add, or if I left anything out, feel free as well.
Thanks.
Kim, it says on there, the home is to be sold to low-to-moderate-income verified buyer. What kind of income are we talking about?
So HUD produces a income verification chart each year, which would, we use for like when we have a moderate income grant. We verify that the individuals living within that unit qualify within the income restrictions. Those come out each year. So we would make sure that the buyer of the home is a low-to-moderate-income individual that would fit that. We would work with banks. There would be a process on that as well.
So for the last 19 years, it started out at 908. And what are we setting at right now?
Current is $616,000.
Okay. And it looks like it's been modified only twice, maybe, in the life of it, maybe once back in 2019. And it was adopted in December of '08, but the sale was-
So just to be clear, Cheryl, you're talking about Presbyterian fund?
Presbyterian fund, yeah.
The fund that the money's coming from, correct?
Yeah.
Yep. Yes, correct.
And all sorts of that. So you're talking about putting it all back after it came out. So it started out at 908, and we're at 6-something. So tell me about the years in the past.
Sure. The fund was established to support low-to-moderate-income housing. There's been a few programs. Paint Pittsburgh, we had a demolition loan program, downtown living program. So over the time since 2005, we have used some of those funds. And some of those are also loans. So they're low-interest loans, and they can be paid back. So that's why there's, it's, we're trying to keep it revolving. But again, that's not taxpayer dollars. This fund is to promote low-to-moderate-income housing. So it sat for quite some time unused, and we really feel like this would be a good use for this and keep it revolving. So it shouldn't ever replenish, it should never be gone. So it'll be a nice way to feed it back. On that note, the fund would be replenished by the property taxes of the new home. And again, that's why we're including the county and the school district and all of the other parties to make sure. Once that amount, that little 10% loan is paid back, then that home goes right on the tax rolls and back to the regular taxing entities, and we have a new house for someone to buy and live in, so.
So if we approve this, and the house is built, and there's an application process for possible buyers, how does that work? Is there a list you go down? We build a house, you want it, or you're number one on the list, or?
So the builder is just required to have sold it to someone that qualifies under the low-to-moderate-income range in order to get the incentive. So they would come to us requesting the incentive once they've sold it to a verified buyer.
The buyer has to fill out a case out for this? No.
They'll do, they'll work with the banks on that aspect. So we would just have to verify that who the builder sold it to qualifies, because the funds are restricted to low-to-moderate-income individuals.
So if the buyer didn't qualify, then the developer or the builder would not get the incentive?
The builder would not be able to get the incentive, and that would be part of our compliance process.
So is that the builder's responsibility to find somebody who qualifies to buy it?
Hmm? Yep. Because that's how they're getting their incentive. So the goal is to keep it full circle and make sure that they're building a home, and qualified buyers get in the home, hopefully, so.
It's a great idea to hopefully incentivize builders or new builders being attracted to this program and attracted to the much-needed gap in that, affordable housing. So great example of outside-of-the-box thinking by, I think Darren and Jay and all the city staff that put the boots on the ground, put work on it, and obviously have a meeting with the county and the school board to partner with them as well. So good job. I'd move to approve.
I second.
Moved by Stu, seconded by Chuck, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, guys.
Good job, Kim.
Appointments. Downtown Advisory Board considers staff recommendation to appoint two individuals, one serving as a downtown property owner and one serving at-large, to first two-year terms as members of the Downtown Advisory Board effective January 1st, 2025. I believe you have ballots at your place.
Yeah. The Downtown Advisory Board, one applicant applied after the deadline, so please only vote for Michaela Crystal, Abby Reeser, or Trista Schuster for the positions.
Or who?
Michaela Crystal, you can vote for, Abby Reeser, and Trista Schuster. Okay, so the first order of business is the mayor needs to ask for a motion to appoint Michaela Crystal as the downtown property owner representative.
I make a motion to appoint Michaela Crystal.
Second.
Motion by Chuck, seconded by Cheryl to appoint Michaela Crystal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The second motion we need would be to appoint Trista Schuster to serve as the at-large member of the Downtown Advisory Board.
Second.
Moved by Stu, seconded by Cheryl to appoint Trista Schuster as the at-large member. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Uh, next one is?
Economic Development Advisory Committee. Consider staff recommendation to appoint one individual to a first three-year term as a member of the Economic Development Advisory Committee effective January 1st, 2025 and concluding December 31st, 2027.
Um, once again, one applicant applied after the deadline. So please only vote for Randy Johnson.
Move to approve her as a candidate.
Motion made by Stu, seconded by Cheryl, to appoint Randy Johnson to the EDAC. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And lastly, Appointments, Memorial Auditorium Advisory Board. Consider staff recommendations to appoint three individuals to first four-year terms as members of the Memorial Auditorium Advisory Board effective January 1st, 2025, concluding December 31st, 2028.
So we're appointing three, so entertain a motion to appoint Joella Skiles, Emily George, and Jeff Wilbur to the Memorial Advisory Board.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Stu, seconded by Cheryl, to appoint Emily George, Joella Skiles, and Jeff Wilbur to the Memorial Advisory Board.